Good afternoon and welcome to the Michigan Independent Citizens Redistricting Commission. Recap of our second round of public hearings. As you know, the commission, the commission loves public engagement. This was the driving force behind Michigan's new redistricting process. And we're ecstatic. I just say ecstatic to share the results, talk about next steps, but also make some acknowledgements about our outstanding partners who really helped us reach this milestone. The commission joins me in this excitement. I hope you can feel the enthusiasm in my voice as a result of this excitement. And I'm just happy to have this stellar and august panel with us. But before we begin, I would like to thank the media. I would like to thank you for your stories and getting the word out about Michigan's new redistricting process. In talking with you, I've heard about the challenges in terms of getting this information out, educating the public and keeping them engaged. And I just want to say thank you for all that you have done and to encourage you to keep it up. We still need public feedback. Don't stop now. We still need public feedback because we're entering into the phase where the commission has already adopted some collaborative maps. And we have some commissioners who have done individual maps. And we need to hear from the public which map would best serve Michigan. Once again, we need to hear from the public with regards to which map, Michigan Congressional, which map, Michigan State Senate, which map, Michigan State House would best serve the state of Michigan. And we would love to hear from you, look forward to hearing from you, and just want to share that with you at this time. As many of you know, we set a goal, we set a goal to have 10,000 distinct public comments. When we set that goal, we didn't realize that when we use IP addresses, that would be the same IP address for everyone that's in the household. So for a family of four, if they wanted to provide public comment, it's conceivable that the husband, the wife, and the two children, whether in high school or college, could use the same account. Having said that, we want to share with you the number of public comments that we did receive. In person, I repeat, in person, since the kickoff of the first round of public hearings, in person, since the kickoff of the first round of public hearings through November 4th, we received 1,950 comments in person. 1,950 comments in person. Now remember, we did not have in-person comments when we were meeting through Zoom, which was basically, you know, at all. So once again, we started this in May, we started this in May. Once again, I want you to know this starts in May, in May, what's starting in May. And May 6th in particular, we had, I guess I would get that right, the first day we took in-person comments was really at our public hearing in Jackson, in Jackson on May 11th. And we started off with 70 and all the way through November 4th, we have 1,950 public comments that we received in person, in person. Written and email comments with 872. Those are comments that were emailed at redistricting@michigan.gov. Or they were sent by mail to our P O box 30318 in Lansing, Michigan. We had 1,107, I repeat, 1,107 remote comments. This means people either called in by the phone or they were came through virtually through Zoom. As you know, the commission was very intentional and deliberate not to allow technology to be a barrier for people to engage in this process. Let me say it again. When is, I want you to catch this. The commission was intentional and deliberate to not let the digital divide to be a barrier in this process. As you know, we worked with Michigan 211 to make sure that we had people to answer questions. We, M D A S, Michigan Department of State, had translators available so that people could ask questions in their native tongue. I just want to let you know, we were very intentional and deliberate. We had 1,107 comments. On the public comment portal, on the public comment portal, we had 7,028. 7,028. On the public comment portal, we had 7,028. And then last but not least, on the mapping comments through my districting, we had 10,796 comments. Let me say that again. 10,796 comments for a total, a grand total of 21,753 people. I should say 753 comments, 21,753 comments in this process. And we're still not done yet. Hashtag show up, speak up, and ensure your voices heard so that the commission can hashtag draw fair maps. So once again, we're excited about this and I have the distinct privilege and honor to turn it over to the vice chairperson of the Michigan Independent Citizens Redistricting Commission from Lansing, Michigan, the cooperator, the facilitator. Let's give it up for M C Rothford.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. You are a joy. And yes, and I do have that enthusiasm. It is, it is, it's quite impressive. I appreciate those numbers as well. And we, but we need our partners, right? The success of the second phase of public hearings, we would not have been, it would have not have been possible without our commissioners, our commissions, partners who volunteered their time, their talent and expertise. Many of them are here. First but not least, Michigan, excuse me, first and foremost, Michigan League of Women Voters, assisted with the onsite registration. We've had student leaders from the University of Michigan and Michigan State University who assisted with the public portal station. We had Michigan 211, as Director Woods talked about. They assisted with providing information and registering people remotely. We had Voters Not Politicians who assisted with onsite registration. We had the Michigan Nonprofit Association and its grantees, and I'm going to give you a list of all of them that engage with their communities, they're with narratives, with maps and with the public comment portal. And this includes, this is the list, there's about 20 of them here. That's access, A C C E S S, access. There's A P I A vote. There's Community First Incorporated. The Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Detroit Alumni Chapter. There's the Detroit Change Initiative. There's the Detroit Hispanic Development Corporation. The Disability Network Oakland and McComb, Global Detroit, LGBT Detroit. Rising Voices of Asian American Families, American Citizens for Justice, the Southfield Alumni Chapter, the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, the North Flint Neighborhood Action Council, M Gage USA, Flint Innovative Solutions, Islamic Center of Detroit, Detroit Branch of the N double A C P, and last but not least, Migwich, also Migwich, thank you. Yeah, that concludes all of our partners and a deep gratitude. And yeah, thank you for making this process so beautiful.
We can't thank Joan Gustafson enough with the Michigan Nonprofit Association and her team for the fine job that they did to ensure representation across the state of Michigan. Migwich, as you know, M C dealt with the indigenous people population across the state and they came in force and was just happy to have them and how they went directly to the people, directly to the people to ensure that their voices are heard. I'm part of the, one of our partners, outstanding partners, M C, and that holds our feet to the fire. You know, let's just be real clear. We don't want partners lock, stock and barrel agreeing with everything we say. We also like to be challenged because improvement happens through constructive criticism. And I'm so deeply honored and privileged to bring forth to you the Vice President for Advocacy of the League of Women Voters in Michigan, none other than Sue Smith. Sue, happy to have you here today.
Thank you, Edward, and good afternoon, everyone. Empowering voters, defending democracy is the mission of the League of Women Voters. League volunteers were pleased to empower voters by supporting the MICRC's five public hearings in October. Over 40 league volunteers from 10 local leagues across the state greeted and registered members of the public from Grayland to Grand Rapids to Detroit and places in between. Many of the league volunteers had also volunteered at the earlier public hearings last spring. They were proud to be able to support grassroots democracy once again. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sue. Appreciate the support and glad that you're here with us. And thank you so much for ensuring that we had people to assist in the public hearing process from the community so that they could recognize their peers. It's nothing like having smart people join you as part of the press conference who can think at the drop of the die, can problem solve quickly and do so with a smile. We have outstanding partnership with the University of Michigan and Michigan State University. And the commission wanted to ensure we had a public comment portal where people could respond in real time, just in case they had to leave because we had an inordinate amount of people that scream for public comments. And as you know, their time, their time was 90 seconds and we had two PhD students, highly intelligent and bright, dealing with public policy and neuroscience. I'll have them introduce themselves in their own way. But we're happy to have two of the best from the University of Michigan and Elena Goldenkoff and Mu Yu Situ. Happy to have them both with us and we'll start off with Elena, then go to Mu Yu and I'll take it back from there. Thank you so much, distinguished ladies, for being with us today.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Hi, my name is Ilana Goldenkoff and I am a PhD candidate in the School of Kinesiology at the University of Michigan. I'm also in the Ford School's Science and Technology Policy Program and hope to continue in a career in science policy and advocacy. I wanted to help staff the MICRC hearings because I was a volunteer and canvasser for Proposal 2 when it was on the ballot in 2018. I was involved with the grassroots organization Voters Not Politicians three years ago and wanted to continue with making districting a transparent process that was very open to constituent feedback. I staffed the public comment portal at the meetings in Detroit, Lansing and Flint. I really enjoyed listening to the unique concerns of individuals in different parts of the state. I also learned a lot about the diverse ways that communities of interest can be defined and how the voice and representation of various stakeholder groups would be affected by the proposed maps. Thank you very much.
Hi, everyone. My name is Mu Yu Situ and I am a graduate student pursuing a PhD in neuroscience. And I am also pursuing the Science, Technology and Public Policy Certificate as well. So I'm very interested in remaining in science policy in the future. I signed up to participate in this event because I wanted to make sure the public's voice was heard by helping them navigate the website and understand the proposals that were online. And my experience staffing the public comments portal was great because I got to hear different concerns and opinions that were voiced by different communities and how they wanted to engage with the committee to advocate for change. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ladies. Once again, thank you so much for your assistance in helping us. Oh, what can I say next about this dynamo? The one that navigates us through the process and is just brilliant in her own right and is not afraid to learn anything new and has figured out auto bond with, with class and dignity even through frustration and has also been a willing participant to help her fellow commissioners. Ladies and gentlemen, it's the chairperson of the MICRC. Let's welcome Commissioner Rebecca Zatella.
Thank you so much, Director Woods. I wanted to talk a little bit about our public comment impact from all of these, these thousands of comments that we've received. The MICRC used the public input that we received at the five public hearings last month to its form its decisions while drafting maps. As part of facilitating and increasing the amount of public comments, we increased the time that individuals were permitted to comment from 60 seconds to 90 seconds to allow for more meaningful comments from people who wish to provide us with feedback. In addition, the commission enabled a process for the public to identify maps in the public comment portal or the mapping portal to be referenced during public comments. And the way that we did that is we came up with tree names for the maps. So rather than referring to a map by its date and abbreviation, people could now refer to it as the pine map or the birch map, which is much easier for the public in identifying those particular maps. It also helps us to understand what maps they were referencing as well. So the public comments that we've received, as, as Mr. Woods mentioned, we've received thousands of public comments. They've enabled us to shape the map making process, particularly in the regions of the state around the Grand Rapids area, also the city of Detroit and then Flint, and then particularly in the tri-cities area of Midland Bay City and Saginaw. So in addition to the collaborative maps that we approved last week and are published on our website, we also had a process for individuals to submit maps as well. So we do have in addition to the nine collaborative maps that we have out there for the congressional state house and state senate districts, we have an additional six maps that were submitted by individual commissioners for all types of maps that we have congressional, senate and house. And as someone who submitted those maps, I can state that the reasons why I submitted them is I, we received additional public comment over the weekend. And I felt that some of those public comments should be incorporated into the some of the maps that we have. And so I created some individual maps that incorporate the public comment that we received so that the public can now comment on those maps as well as the collaborative maps.
Thank you so much, Commissioners Zatella. Last but not least, the glue, the executive director moves quietly but does deliver, does deliver with a punch in terms of getting things done and navigating this historic process for the first time ever in the history of Michigan. Don't be fooled, but she's definitely a hammer, but a hammer with a smith. Let's welcome the MICRC Executive Director, Sue Ann Hammer Smith.
Thank you, Director Woods. I'm so happy to be here today and, and have these partners with us. It's a great time in the state of Michigan, such a great historic time. I want to talk a little bit about the key dates moving forward. The Constitution states that upon the MICRC publication of the proposed redistricting maps, the commission must provide a minimum of 45 days for additional public comment. During this 45-day period, the MICRC plans to host public meetings allowing for additional comment on Thursdays from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. The meetings will be held on these Thursdays on November 18th, December 2nd, December 16th, and lastly, December 30th. Details about these meetings will be on the website, michigan.gov/micrc under the meeting notices and materials. Commissioners are expected to adopt the final maps no later than December 30th of this year. And then the commission will be required to publish the maps within 30 days after adopting a plan. Included with these final maps will be reference materials and the data used in drawing the final maps as well as any programming information used to produce and test the plans. The Michigan Secretary of State will keep a record of all the MICRC proceedings and will publish and distribute each map and the required documentation. The adopted redistricting plan with new legislative boundaries for the state house, state senate and congressional districts will become law 60 days after its publication. And these district maps will take place prior to the 2022 primary and general elections. Again, we're greatly appreciative to the state of Michigan, public commenters, so many people who came out and gave public comment for all the partners involved in the process and for the dedication of this commission to produce fair maps for the state of Michigan.
Thank you so much to our executive director, Sue Ann Hammer Smith. Once again, Michiganders, it is not too late, say it with me. It is not too late to show up, hashtag show up and speak up and ensure your voices are heard. We want the public feedback. We want that from you. So please, 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 whether you come in person, come remotely, whether you mail something in or me email something in. But more importantly, we would prefer if you put it in the public comment portal, you can put it in the public comment portal at www.michigan.gov/micrc in the public comment portal, or if you attach it to the maps, if you attach your comments to the maps through my districting, those are the two preferred methods. Once again, either the public comment portal or through my districting, both things can be accessed off our website, www.michigan.gov/micrc. We need your help to ensure that the commission hashtags draw fair maps. If you have questions, you can still call us at 1-832-3-YOU DRAW, that's 1-833-3-YOU DRAW, Our mailbox, P O box, P O box, 30318, Lansing, Michigan, 4891, 48909, I'm sorry, 48909. At this time, we're willing to open it up for Q and A and we can take some questions if you have them. And if we don't have the answers, we'll give back to you. But I see, I see our friends that are coming in here with the questions. I do want to give a special shout out to my hometown. I see Gail Olson and W S J M in the Benton Harbor, St. Joseph area, my home community area. And just definitely want to give them a shout out and we'll have thank you for joining with us today. From the Detroit Free Press, we have Clara Hendrickson.
Yeah, hi. Thank you so much for holding this press conference. So I'm hoping either the commissioners or staff can speak to the voting process. I am wondering if none of the collaborative maps gets a majority vote with two Dems, two Republicans and two independents. Is there any plan to revote to get to a majority? If, if one plan gets the lowest number of votes and take that off the table? And what happens if two plans get a majority vote with the required partisan breakdown?
Commissioners Zatella, I want to take that one, but also want to share with you that this information is also available on our website under redistricting 201. Redistricting 201, you can click this information and get it right off the website.
So I would say that we're going to follow the constitutional process and the process is, to start with, hopefully we can all agree on a map with that 222 breakdown of two Democrats, two Republicans and two independents. If we don't, we are then supposed to move to ranked choice voting. And if there is a tie between the maps that have gone through ranked choice voting, there is a process within the constitution to eliminate that tie or break that tie. So our intention is to follow the constitution as to whether we're going to eliminate maps. I would, I would think that that would be something we would discuss as part of our final deliberations in voting process and, and make those determinations at that time. But we have not made those decisions in advance.
Beth LeBach, Detroit News.
Hi, yeah, thank you for taking questions today. I had a quick question. So first off, do you guys have any update as to when all the maps and legal descriptions will be posted, starting that 45-day period? I know there's talk about it starting between Friday and Sunday. And then my other question is, I'm assuming commissioners are going to try to avoid restarting the 45-day public comment period by making changes to the maps. How can residents who are commenting during these 45 days be assured that, that their comments actually have weight? Because I'm assuming, you know, if, if they say anything important enough, that 45-day window will, will have to restart. So I guess what kind of weight are, are commissioners going to give the comments that come in from here on out?
I think that's a great question. They're going to give it the same weight as they're giving every other comment. You know, there's no assumption that we're not going to change. And we're going to have to weigh it just like we receive every other comment to see whether or not any of the plans have what's suggested incorporated. So we'll really have to wait and see because we don't know what public comments we'll receive at this time. As relates to the 45-day kickoff period, we were, if you go to proposed maps, you can see all of the plans are there right now with the exception of the legal description. Tomorrow, you know, in honor of our veterans, it's Veterans Day. So if we're not able to get it up today, we hope to get it up Friday, but no later than Sunday. But we will issue out a meeting notification, or I should say a meeting notice to let everyone know when the 45-day public comment period will officially begin. All right, Andrew Mullin, I see from the Midland Daily News. I'm not sure if you still have a question, but for those who may not know how to use Zoom, if you go to reactions, the reaction button and just click on the reactions at the bottom of the screen and raise your hand, click on the raise your hand button, raise hand, and then you'll be able to ask a question and I will call on you. Andrew, if you have a question, we'll take it at this time if you unmute yourself. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Sorry, it wasn't giving me the reaction there. It was like I said, Andrew Mullin with the Midland Daily News. I'm calling specifically about my area because there's been a lot of chatter around the city of Midland regarding the map strong for this particular area. I'm sure you've heard by now, I know I've seen a lot of actual maps. There are a lot of people concerned about the city limits of Midland being separated from the rest of the county or at least most of the county, along with its watershed going up at the Gladwin Counties and other surrounding areas as well. Obviously, last year, Midland, the city of Midland and well, the surrounding area was hit with a 100-year, 500-year flood, whatever you want to call it, after the dam failures in Sanford and Eatonville. So a lot of people raised concerns about proper, I guess, representation in Congress and in the, you know, and over in Lansing as well. So my question is, why was the decision made to separate the city of Midland from most of or all of the county and the surrounding water sets? And how were community, the community of interests kind of weighed in with the decision-making process?
Commissioner Roth, Commissioner Roth, you want to take that?
Sure. I mean, the, the number of comments that we received to keep it whole, to not keep it whole balanced, right? We, I recognize that you're, you're absolutely right. There is a strong emphasis from the city to, to keep it with the existing, the way the map currently is drawn. We were asked, asked to start with fresh maps. We listened to public comment. So we used to try to respond directly to your question, like we used the public comment and we drew the best maps, trying to compromise, trying to understand all the issues. And we believe that we've drawn fair maps within a transparent way with a, with a public input that they, that we, yeah, we've heard. It's been controversial.
But also in addition to that, the, you have collaborative maps, individual maps. And you have some diversity with some of those maps as it relates to Midland. So we would definitely want to encourage your readership to go in and register which map best identifies what they would like to see for their community. Once again, there's House, Senate and Congressional and click on the maps of best identify. And if none of them do, then make a suggestion so the commission can consider it during its 45-day public comment period. Anyone else with any questions? Beth?
Yeah, I, I can wait until others get a chance to, to ask a question. It looks like there's a few other in the line.
I only see you and Claire and both of you have already had a chance to speak. So go ahead.
Well, Edward?
Yes.
I'm, I'm seeing Tanya, Juliana, Juliana not Lauren Gibbons are all showing up as having their hands raised and Tanya.
Oh, I am sorry. Tanya, you were first. I was on the wrong page. Tanya, please identify your organization.
Hi, this is Tanya with the Flint Quarter Year News.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, so, um, at this point, can you kind of answer how likely it looks that portions of Flint will be put into two separate state house districts based on all the public comment? And also how seriously are Matt, and, and based of course on the other criteria, and how seriously are maps such as T 72, 73, the house map or any other map, Flint residents and community partners created being considered? And why or why not are they being considered?
Commissioners Zatella, Rothford, anyone?
Yeah, so, um, so in terms of the collaborative maps that were approved last week, I believe all of them have Flint whole as a city. And then my individual map has Flint separate. So we do have different versions out there right now that are awaiting public comments. With all comments that we have received. With all comments that we have received, we consider them and weigh them. And I believe that particular map you referenced was something that we discussed in a meeting and considered. And I don't believe we ultimately adopted it, although we did take portions of it. But with all, all comments that we receive and all, all proposed maps, we, we weigh them, we evaluate them, and, you know, if appropriate, we incorporate them. And if not, we don't incorporate them. And so that process has all been open and transparent, and was all discussed publicly as to what the reasons were and were not for those, those additions.
Commissioner Rothhorn, anything you'd like to add?
No, I think that was adequate, absolutely.
Great. Juliana Knott, if you can identify your organization, and then you can ask your questions.
Hi, this is Juliana from the Herald Palladium. We're based in St. Joseph, Michigan. So for the map across state senate, state house, congressional races, you guys have given particular weight to these Lake Shore communities. That's been a community of interest that's been, it looks like it's been more important than county lines and other municipal boundaries. I was just wondering if you could explain the rationale behind that decision a little more.
Well, sure, that really has to do with the seven ranked redistricting criteria, which is in the Constitution. And if you take a look at communities of interest, it's rank number three. And if you look at county, city, municipal boundaries, it's rank number six. One of the things about the education process with regards to the commission is we're not using the APOL standards, we're not using the APOL standards. We're using the seven ranked redistricting criteria as outlined in the Constitution when voters passed us in two thousand eighteen. So definitely really would like to share that with you with regards to that. You can go to our website and click on their MICRC legislation, and you can see the seven ranked redistricting criteria. And for the Herald Palladium, my hometown newsletter, tell, thank you for joining us today. Happy to have you. I'm Lauren Gibbons with MLive.
Hey, thanks, thanks for having the call. And I apologize if this, if this is repeats at all. I had to join a couple minutes late here, but I just wanted to hear from the commissioners. Now that we have these collaborative maps and individual, if it gets to that point, could you talk a little bit about the rationale you're considering as you prepare to vote between these different options come December?
Sure, Commissioner Zatella, then Commissioner Rothhorn?
Yeah, I think what we're waiting to hear is more public comment. We've put the maps out there, we've identified them by the tree names for the collaborative maps and individual names by the individual submissions. And I think we're, we're waiting to see what the public says and what the reaction is. We already have received, I would say, hundreds of comments on the maps, and we will just be monitoring those comments. And then based on that feedback, meet together to come up with some conclusions.
Yes, we've used the seven criteria. Now we're using the public input. This is, this is what we're looking for. And I, I believe Commissioner Curry has said this more than once, that the public is going to help her choose. And I know that's, that echoes what Commissioners Zatella said. And what we're, what we're trying to do is listen, listen, listen.
What a novel idea. We're actually going to listen to the people that put the ballot proposal in place by more than sixty-one percent, who made an intentional and deliberate decision to have citizens such as Commissioners Zatella, citizens such as Commissioner Rothhorn, to do the process. Beth, Detroit News.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I actually have two questions, they're kind of unrelated, but if you're able to answer them, that'd be great. So today, a Republican senator introduced a bill that would, like, bar the redistricting commission from entering into closed session at all. And so I was hoping to chat with you guys if that was the case, or if the AG were to opine that it was unconstitutional to enter into closed session. I guess, can you talk about what it would mean for you not to have that outlet? And to bring those discussions into open meeting? And then my other question is, we, we haven't heard much from police since that death threat was made. I guess I was wondering what kind of details you guys can give about what happened that day and what prompted the reaction from the commission that, that did occur that day?
I'll address your second question. Commissioner Rothhorn or Commissioner Zatella, do you want to address the first one?
The first one?
Yep, go ahead, Commissioner Rothhorn.
I was going to say, Commissioners Zatella, I think it has a lot to do with attorney-client privilege, which I'm becoming aware of. But I think that Commissioners Zatella is intimately aware of how to, you know, this, that works. And I think that's the, that's the crux, that's the essence of your question is like, do we need attorney-client privilege? And I, at this point, as a, as a citizen, I'm going to say yes. It helps us understand how we can actually get these maps done with a legitimate understanding. But Commissioners Zatella, please, yeah, help me under, yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say, all public boards have the ability under the Open Meetings Act to have closed meetings for personnel matters or for attorney-client privilege matters. And those provisions are something we've rarely used, we've only used in one occasion. It's not something we make it a habit of, because we generally want to stay open and transparent. But there are times where, as a commission, we do need to seek advice from our attorneys and have it in a meeting where we can discuss it all in the same room. And we properly utilized that particular exception to the Open Meetings Act to have that meeting and to entertain questions and receive information that we needed to receive. So I certainly don't think we intend to make it a practice to have closed meetings. Like I said, it was, it was a one-time event that was appropriate, given the circumstances of what we were discussing.
On the second issue, it was basically what we understood was there was a twenty-one-year-old male from the Dearborn area that put in the death threat via email. As you all know, if you want to do public comments, you have to register through our site to provide public comments. He registered to our site to provide public comments. After he registered, you get an automatic email so that you know when you can provide the public comment. And then he came back and provided the death threat to the commission in responding to that public comment. When the authorities went to investigate, they talked to the, the male, as well as the, the parents of the male, and they made it determined that the person wasn't a threat. And that's all the information that we have. Claire, Beth, did I answer your questions, both of them? Sorry.
Yes, thank you.
All right, Claire, Detroit Free Press.
So I, I have a follow-up question on, on the closed-door meeting you all held to discuss voting rights issues with, with your lawyers. One thing that your voting rights attorney has told you repeatedly during the mapping process is how important it is to show your work when drawing districts that comply with the Voting Rights Act. So I'm just wondering, the commissioners could speak to whether having a closed-door meeting to discuss voting rights issues means that the public is missing out on information that went into your mapping process that commissioners considered when they were making adjustments to the maps?
I would say no, we, we made no decisions there. So we, right, showing our work, right? It's, it's often about decision-making, right? And we didn't discuss or make any decisions in those, that, that closed session.
And we did make further changes to the maps subsequent to that meeting. You know, which was all, all occurred in open and transparent meetings, so that everybody could see what we were doing. So I, I don't think that there's any concerns about not showing our work because every single line we've drawn has been done publicly.
And, and one of the things I'd really like to make it clear is that we did not go lightly. As the thirteen of us, we did not go lightly into a closed session, right? And we're, each of us, as citizens, learning what this means. I mean, some of us are lawyers, right? So do understand more of it. They helped all thirteen of us understand the weights of not going into a closed session, right? The potential that we might actually not be able to defend our maps. And that we, yeah, ultimately, we want it, right? We're under a time crunch, right? The thirteen of us take our duties seriously. We did not enter that lightly, or, yeah, with, with the intention of being untransparent. We, we intend to, we made the best decision we had with the information. We needed information that our attorneys essentially said, you don't want to risk having this in an open meeting. There is a privilege that you can enjoy, take it. We did.
And as you know, this has been consistent with how we responded in the past. And so we're moving forward, open and transparency, asking people, come out, show up and speak up, November eighteenth, December two, December sixteenth, and at a date no later than December thirtieth, as it relates to the mapping process. Once again, this is about, all about the state of Michigan. This is your opportunity to weigh in and ensure fair maps for Michigan's congressional, Michigan state senate, and Michigan state house. Once again, thanks to the members of the press for getting this word out. We would like to thank, once again, we like to thank our partner, Good Marketing, for all that they have done. Because of the free media coverage, if it was purchased as paid advertising, the cost would be over one point two million dollars. And so we want to thank Good Marketing for all of its work and efforts in front of the scenes, behind the scenes, and helping us get the word out. But most importantly, we not only want to thank the media, but most importantly, we want to thank the citizens who continue to provide comments as relates to this process. And we want to encourage all Michiganders to let you know it's not too late. Go to the website, look at the proposed maps, and ensure your voice is heard. Once again, thank you so much.
Edward, Edward, sorry. Mr. Mullen raised his hand again in the chat and is asking to ask another question. I'm sorry, I just wanted to try to sneak him in before we locked off.
Okay, you got lucky because I'm sure not seeing his hand.
It's, yeah, he's not raised, he put a comment in the chat.
Okay.
Yes, sorry. I don't have a hand, apparently, in Zoom for some reason. So I did want to ask real quick, I don't know how much the commission is able to, how much the commission would have a say on this, but looking that Michigan is losing another congressional seat this time around, what, when will we kind of hear, like, once, you know, maps are finalized about when, you know, like, certain representatives will be moved to, like, other districts? Or like, will they switch around, or whoever might be, you know, cut out? When are we going to hear about those changes as far as? And like, for instance, we're, we're wondering, because right now, Midland's represented by John Lulinar. So where is he going to go like after, like, obviously, where would he go like after, you know, the, the maps are voted on? Where would he, would he, like, I guess, when would we hear those decisions?
Andrew, I mean, I think you need to really go to the website and look at the thirteen congressional districts. It's not about taking a particular congressman out. I mean, if you look at the seven ranked redistricting criteria, number one is equal population in the Voting Rights Act. So under the previous standards, we're about seven hundred and seventeen thousand, and we have fourteen districts. Now that we have thirteen districts, we have to have, on average, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred people in each congressional district. So the impact is not just one congressional district, it's all of them across the state of Michigan. I might be happy to chat with you offline and provide you some additional information with regards to the process, but you might want to also look at redistricting one oh one and redistricting two oh one, our documents that explain the process off the website. But I want to be real, real clear, because it's a, it's the biggest myth of all time is that we're cutting out a congressperson. That's not how it works, it's done by equal population, which is the number one redistricting criteria in the following the Voting Rights Act. That's how it's done. And if you look at the maps, the congressional maps, you'll be able to see each one of those congressional maps. There's three collaborative maps and two individual maps. And that you can identify what's taking place with regards to Midland, of, where you're reporting from, and to see where they're included and what that congressional district will look like. So please, 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 take a look at the proposed maps off the website. Dave, I see you from the AP, and I think this will be the last question that we'll take.
Thanks for being on the call. There was reference earlier to the voting rights considerations. It looked like the commission did toward the end there, started drawing some majority African-American districts, I think in the state house, but I believe not in the state senate and not in the, in Congress. And I was wondering if you could explain why you didn't also draw some majority black districts in the senate and in Congress? Thanks.
I'm going to have Commissioners Zatella, but let's be very, very clear. There was no intent to draw majority black districts. If you were listening to the discussion, which is also available on YouTube, there was a desire to keep neighborhoods whole. And that's a totally different ballgame than drawing majority black districts. Once again, and it was said repeatedly throughout the conversation by several commissioners about the need to keep neighborhoods whole. And that really speaks to the communities of interest. As you know, it has three characteristics, historical or cultural characteristics, and the third one is economic interests. But Commissioners Zatella, Commissioner Rothhorn, if you want to comment, please do so for Dave's, to Dave's question, thank you.
Yeah, I would just echo exactly what you said. Yes, we did make changes in Metro Detroit, and that may have changed some of the demographic percentages in those districts. But those changes were made to accommodate neighborhoods, which were communities of interest, and specifically identified us as wanting to be kept together. So it, it wasn't a VRA analysis issue, it was a communities of interest analysis of keeping communities together and changing lines to make sure that that was accomplished. And, and you can see that when you watch the hearings, because we were pulling up the neighborhood maps and looking at where we had split communities, our neighborhoods, and putting them back together as best we could. And so that was really the focus of our, of our changes there.
Commissioner Rothhorn has the thumbs up. Dave, did I answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Once again, thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen. Please, please, please encourage people to come and speak up at www.michigan.gov/micrc. And once again, thank you so much for being with us this afternoon. Have the great rest of your day. Goodbye.